Well, let's get it over with. Call meeting order, over to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our activity reports, mine fairly brief, just a couple informal meetings. That's our last council meeting. We are, do have a familiar face up here behind the black mask, Tarek, who's been on the job for a little over a week now.
Yep.
Well, we'll just welcome you, and you can go first for your department head report.
Well, thank you very much, and yeah, it's been a pleasure being here. Yeah, I, this is my second week here, actually going on my third week here, and so far, I'm, I have to say, I'm pretty impressed by how smoothly things are running here. I've had a chance to, you know, toured the city and meet some of the business leaders and some of the facilities, and kind of have an overview of how things are operating, and I'm looking forward to seeing how I can contribute and how I can add value to it.
All right, thank you. Counselor LeBeau.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Hertzberg.
Oh, been busy. Property negotiation meeting with Roger Thiel, and just got done with Public Works.
All right, thank you. Counselor Member Rinkie, Mayor-elect Rinkie.
Thank you. We had that same property negotiations meeting with Mr. Thiel, where we also discussed the mobile home park and potential relocation of that, and then we had our second-to-last Policies and Procedures meeting of the year. Len doesn't know what I'm calling one for tomorrow. We're finally done, where we approved the personnel policies later on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Gilmore.
I had a really short policy and procedure meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, then our other department head report is Mr. Hertzberg.
All right, thank you. First of all, the Christmas tree drop-off site, again, will be at the fire hall, and we will accept trees there till approximately that January 11th. The well sealing, the storm water, source water management grant we got, and we have about $9,000 for sealing wells, so if there is any residents out there that have any unused or abandoned wells, we do have funds to assist you in getting those sealed up. And just a reminder to residents, if it does snow, please clean your sidewalks and the area around the fire hydrants if you're lucky enough to have one. During this nice weather we've been having, our crews, we have caught up on a lot of tree trimming. Meter reading will be next week, Monday or Tuesday, and again, reminder, this coming up will be first quarter, and that is where the sewer rates are set, so if somebody is serious about conserving water, mindful to do it in that first quarter. And also, crews, we will be updating our tree inventory, so we're still working on that. Questions?
Anybody? All right, I guess not. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda, which will include removing the minutes from those seven meetings on page one, vouchers off our update totaling $339,266.76, and then the resignation there of Counselor Gilmore from the Park and Tree Board, resigning as a member there effective the end of the year. That's the consent agenda.
I move to remove Part C from the consent agenda. I'm kidding, I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried.
It could make my life so much easier.
Just always takes one. All right, then, oh, I should note, too, that we have council members-elect in the audience here, too. One just snuck in the door, welcome. Okay, and Jessica's coming in.
She's not.
There she is, welcome back with our debt management study, and you are up.
Well, Mayor, Council, good evening. Tonight, for you, we have a brief presentation to just give you an update on where the city's debt is currently, given that you're going to be considering the 2021 budget and levy later in your agenda. In talking with Jennifer and Belinda, it seemed like this was a good time to just kind of give you a review and a snapshot of where things are at. So, in your packet this evening, and I believe it starts on page four, what we have is a compilation of the city's debt overall, and then within the packet, too, you have the individual series of bonds that are currently outstanding. From there, what we did is we put together a couple of graphs, just to give you an idea of what the support is for the existing debt, for debt service levy, and then also support from the utility funds, so both wastewater and water. And then at the very end, we have a sheet that just kind of gives you an update on any refunding possibilities, calling bonds in early, et cetera. This is something that Northland looks at on about a quarterly basis, just to see if there's any refunding possibilities that we should alert you to. So, if it's okay with you, Mayor, Council, I will just kind of dive in, and if there's any questions that you have as we go, just let me know, and we can, we can set aside some time to discuss. So, the first page, so this will be page five, what this is, is really just taking all of your debt and combining it together, so that you can see from a broad perspective where things sit today. So, on the left side of the page, what you're seeing is the overall principal and interest payments that are due on an annual basis. That number is tied together at the bottom there, so you can see that just under $13 million in total principal is due from the city over the life of the bonds, and then, again, breaking that into principal and interest. And as you go into the right side of the page, you'll see the various sort of buckets, the support for those debt service payments. So, what you've got is the principal and interest payments that are due, what that means from an overall levy perspective, and then kind of how you break that down with the assessment revenues that you'll receive, the support from the utility funds, storm sewer support, and then other revenues, and we'll talk about those other revenues as we get into this. This is really due to some debt that the city issued on behalf of a specific project, where you're getting payments from that project. And then, from there, what you see is the resulting net tax levy, and we'll look at that a bit as we go forward. Any pages on that, or, excuse me, any questions on that first page? Okay, so the next several pages that we'll go over, and I'll go over these quickly, just being that we're not asking council for any approval of new debt, we are just reviewing what you have outstanding, but these next series of pages are going to be the individual bond issues that are outstanding. So, the first one that we're looking at is the GO sewer revenue note of 2013. This was issued through the Public Facilities Authority. So, you can see at the very top, it just gives you some information regarding the purpose of the debt, when it was issued, the original amount, when that matures annually each year, and by mature, I mean the principal due dates, then you've got the outstanding balance, and if there are any options for calling that debt in, and then the final maturity, of course. So, with this one, this is a sewer revenue note through PFA, this was issued to finance lift station rehab of the pond system, spray irrigation lift station and spray irrigation equipment. This was originally issued back in '13, just under 3.1 million at the time of issuance. Right now, what you've got outstanding is $2,505,000. With PFA, you can pay off that debt at any given point. Obviously, this is a very large issue, so you wouldn't want to come up with that cash all at one point. What we've seen from a couple of cities that have looked at potential refinancing of PFA debt, PFA has declined to refund debt at this point, but in most circumstances, being that the interest rate here, and you can see this in the middle of that first section, the interest rate here is 1%, so that's a really, really nice interest rate, probably not something that you'd look to refund. We have seen some issuers that would potentially benefit from refunding, but most certainly do not. But, again, what you're seeing here is just the principal and interest breakdown, and then as you move across the page, where that payment support comes from. So, this is related to the sanitary sewer system. Any questions on this one? Okay, so the next one is very, very similar, also done in 2013 for utility improvements. This is for the water side, of course. This is, or was issued, excuse me, just over 3.6 million. What you've got here is an outstanding balance of 2.45 million, again, callable at any time. The final maturity here is in 2033. So, same setup as the previous page, just broken out for principal and interest, and where the debt service support comes from, of course, this being the water utility. Going on to that next page, this is your GO improvement bonds, this is Series 2014A for the city. This was used to finance a street improvement project, so again, issued in '14. The original amount here was $840,000. The principal amounts are due annually on December 1st. You've got an outstanding balance here of $355,000, and this one matures in 2024. You do have a call date here, and we'll talk about this at the very end, but the call date here is December 1 of 2021, so that means that you can call the bonds in, you can refund them, but being that this is a rather short issue, that it's going to expire in 2024, most times when we see cities calling debt at that point, it's really just to pay it off. Doesn't make a ton of sense to refund, just because you're going to have some costs that you're going to incur as a result of that refunding. Any questions on that one? Okay, so moving on to the 16A, this was for also a street improvement project. Original amount here was 1.35 million, what's outstanding currently is $840,000. The final maturity here is in 2026, so this is a 10-year, excuse me, 10-year issue. So, same setup there, you've got the principal and interest payments broken out, and then the individual support pieces. So, of course, you've got assessments coming in, you've got some support coming from both the sewer and the water utility, and then the other revenues that you're seeing there are really just interest income that we've assumed is coming from the outstanding cash balance that's in that debt service fund. On the next series of bonds, this will be your 17A bonds. So, this was related to street improvements, to Lake Avenue North. This was issued for a total amount of $760,000. The call here is not until 2025, the final maturity is 2027. And then, again, same, same setup, special assessment revenues, and here, we're not showing any revenues coming from sewer water, so we assume that these are just all surface improvements that were done as a result of that project. Next, you've got your 2019A. So, this was related to the AMPI expansion project, so while we're showing debt service here, this is meant to be canceled annually by the revenues that you receive directly from AMPI, but we show it just being that the city's general obligation is behind it, so if the, if there were something to happen, the city would be responsible, but we do not anticipate that to be a problem. The next series is the 2019B. This was issued in an amount of $3,980,000, being that this was just issued, we're showing an outstanding balance of $3,765. Again, you're seeing those special assessment revenues, revenues from the sewer, water, and some storm sewer revenues in there, and then a little bit of other revenue, again, that's just assumed to be interest income coming from that debt service fund. And then, last but not least, we have the Series 2020A. This was to finance land acquisition and line extensions for the sanitary sewer system, and we would anticipate some of that debt service being offset by some of the lease payments that you'll receive from that land. So, that wraps things up for the individual series of bonds. Are there any questions about those, those series? So, next, what we've got is just a graph. So, this shows your tax levy by year, and as you're planning for projects going into the next several years, we thought this would be helpful, just kind of keep front of mind as you're planning for any facility needs or street improvement projects that you have going forward. So, if you want to do anything special with structuring of debt, if you do have new projects coming on and you want to manage the overall tax levy, it just shows when that tax levy starts to fall off. So, right now, you're sitting at just under $300,000. That'll creep up a little bit over the next couple of years, and then drop off in 2025, and then you have a pretty significant drop off in 2027. So, when we're looking at some of those street projects where there is a tax levy that will be used to support it, that's one of those areas where we might look at, should we delay principal a bit, should we wrap that around some of your existing debt? So, that's just something to kind of keep in mind as you're planning for those projects. And then going on to the next two graphs, what you'll see is, these are for the utility funds, and this shows the debt in total, so this does not account for those AMPI payments coming in, but what you're seeing is a pretty level debt service here for the sanitary sewer system, and this is also the case for the water system, but pretty level out through 2030, and then that drops off a bit in 2031, and then really comes down beginning in 2033. And it should be noted that for the city, generally, all of your door, your debt is pretty short, you don't really have a ton of debt that's, you know, out there 20 years, you've done a really good job at amortizing your debt quickly. And then on the next one, this is water, so again, very similar to what you saw with the wastewater, very, very level out till 2020, excuse me, 2033, and then drops off in 2034. And then finally, on the last page, what you'll see is, these are the refundings that we monitor for the city, we look at this pretty often, especially as rates sort of jump around. Currently, we're in a very low interest rate environment. Fortunately for the city, you've either timed it really well when you've undertaken your projects, or you've just been very, very lucky, because your, your interest rates are really attractive. So, we talked about this at the beginning, you've got these two PFA notes, both at 1%. So, these are ones that you could pay off if you had the cash to do that, but they are some pretty large balances. Overall, it doesn't make sense to refinance them, even if we could get PFA to agree to that, I don't think that that would be a good move on the city's part. Going down further into the debt series that you have, the 2014A is the only one that's currently, or I shouldn't say currently, but will be callable in this next year, so on 2-1 of '11. We saw, due to tax reform a few years back, the elimination of advanced refundings, so you can't call bonds in ahead of their call date, you can only do what we call a current refunding, and to do that, you've got to be within 90 days of the call date. So, this is something that you'd want to consider perhaps next fall. If you wanted to call those in, what it would mean is that the city would make its regularly scheduled payment on 2-1, and then you could pay off the remaining balance. So, what that would require is a principal payment of $270,000. So, if you felt that you could part with that cash, you could certainly do that. What that would mean is that you'd be saving about $13,050 in total interest over the remaining life of the bonds. Again, this one expires out there in 2024, so not a ton of interest savings, but certainly if you find yourself in a, in a cash positive position, that's something that you could entertain doing. And then the remaining ones here, what we look at is, because they don't meet the savings threshold, and because we can't do a tax exempt refunding, what some cities are looking at currently is doing an advance refunding, but as a taxable, because that's still allowed. Now, to do that means that you're issuing debt with a taxable rate, and in some cases right now, that works, because interest rates are very low. But you can see, in Painesville's case, what we'd be seeing is actually a negative savings, but we wanted to include that here, so that you can see what the implications of doing something like that would be. Sometimes we also see cities that do these advanced refundings on a taxable basis, if there's an issue with structure or cash flow, where you want to change the existing structure of debt, so you could do that, too. Fortunately, I don't think that the city is any, in any position where you're really hurting for funds, or where you're not really able to make those payments, so restructuring at this time is probably not in the best interest of the city, but it remains an option for you. So, with that, that's kind of a very brief overview of the debt that you have. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about the individual series, about any sort of planning that you want to do going forward, but this is the debt as it exists today.
Anybody have any specific questions? Your comment about being either lucky or, or doing some, some planning, I think it's a combination of both, because we've had good advisors and staff in the past to keep an eye on, on things like this. I know we've kind of adjusted some of our projects simply because of the, the timing, so. You have a, go ahead, fire one ready.
How does our debt level compare to other cities' debt levels, above, below average?
Um, I would say average to below. I would think that the city does a really nice job of maintaining infrastructure, but we've certainly seen cities of similar sizes with a debt load that's significantly higher.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find out.
But Painesville's done a really nice job of keeping track of the projects that need to be done, and really supporting some outside projects, too, like the AMPI expansion, and in taking on those projects when it's smart to do so. So, overall, I would say that the city is in a really good spot from a debt perspective.
Okay, that's good.
Anybody else?
I do want to point out, too, that when I had given you guys some budget preliminary figures, I had listed two bonds as being callable in 2021, the second one being the 2016A bond, and that actually, on the debt study last year, had a typo showing 2021, the actual callable date is not till 2024.
I guess we're through with you.
Okay.
You're through with us.
I'll get on your hair.
Until next time, thank you very much for all you've done, you and your firm there.
Okay, see you guys next time.
Thank you. Travel safe.
Thank you.
Have good holidays.
You as well.
Yep. And then just a reminder, should have mentioned this earlier, but we do have to take a break at 6:30 for our truth in taxation hearing, but we'll move on to Item B, designating the Green Roof Area Center as our polling place for upcoming, that's Resolution 2020-23.
I move approval of Resolution 2020-23, the designation of polling place.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve Resolution 2020-23. Discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. And next item, Item C, police department sale of forfeited property, and Chief, you got three vehicles there you want to get rid of, right?
I do. We've got three vehicles that have finally come to conclusion, so we're able to dispose of them. None of them are necessarily in a condition that the city would find useful for us, so looking to try something a little bit different. We've tried, you know, parking them down on Lake Avenue and selling them that way, which hasn't generated much. We tried eBay, which generate a lot of fraud and just bogus bids. So, I'm looking to dispose of these by the state's system through MinBid and the Department of Administration there, and see what we can do that way. I know that site does get a lot of traffic, because we see a lot of the state, you know, state vehicles and stuff like that that go up on bid there, so there's quite a few people that, you know, monitor that site, so hopefully we can get some, maybe a little more traction that way. All three of these, I believe, have over 200,000 miles, so I'm not expecting to break the bank on any of them.
Are you still going to park them over at the?
At the RV dump? Maybe, and I say maybe only because with winter coming, you know, we get one bad snowstorm that could get, you know, hopefully I'll have them gone in the next two weeks, so it won't be that big of a deal, but some of these vehicles also have had some issues with tires and staying inflated, so, you know, if I park them over there, it may be a little hard to get them moved after.
Could park them next door over here. And?
I keep getting yelled at when I do that.
Yeah, I know. And, and that, that meets the requirements for the bidding process?
It does, because it's an online auction, open public auction, it meets requirements under state statute.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the 2002 Ford Focus, 2007 Chevy pickup, 2004 Volkswagen, by a MinBid online auction, with the funds being split accordingly into state statute, and placed in the department's forfeiture fund for future needs.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau, as on the action sheet on page 20, for those three surplus items, or the forfeited items, discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, and that carried. All right, thank you. And the next item, coming from, through the airport, our manager, Ron, we've got a lease to approve here with Zaludi Aviation.
Yes, thank you. Hangar number 99, which is a private unit, it is the one that the city had looked at possibly purchasing. The gentleman did not want to wait any longer, so he has sold it to the SIR individual, however, he did indicate in the future, if the city ever did want to discuss that option, he would be open to discussing it, so.
And we know this individual well, too.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the Painesville Municipal Airport ground lease between the City of Painesville and Zaludi Aviation LLC.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, I heard first there, sorry, Neil, to approve the Painesville Municipal Airport ground lease between the City of Painesville and Zaludi Aviation LLC, any discussion?
Sir, one comment, reading this over, it says 15-year lease at five and 10 years of review. Do we ever raise the rent on land, or?
Aren't we, we never have. It has gone to the board several times, and they've always left it the same, so.
Is that kind of in line with what other airports?
Yeah, it's kind of all over the board, but if we take Litchfield, for example, I think they charge a dollar. I mean, it's.
A dollar a square foot?
No.
Or a dollar?
A dollar.
Oh, wow.
Chuck. Yeah, it's.
Well, I like that the review provisions are in there, but if it never moves, kind of meaningless.
Sounds like a good deal, Neil, you could buy an airplane, learn to fly it, and then put a hangar up through.
Probably not, I'm lucky to walk.
Does that have to be a single, a single passenger?
It'd be experimental.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, none, that carried. And the next one, we got a couple minutes, can we handle, maybe we should take Item F, because we're probably going to table that, is that right? Item, Item F, which is on whatever page there, that shouldn't take too long. We have not heard back from the attorney or the labor union yet, so it's a recommendation that the, that be tabled until we give them more time to respond, in case they have some issues. Does that sound amenable there from policies and procedures and staff? All right, we'll just put that on the agenda for next time, and then we'll move back up to, okay, that takes care of Item F, and it is 6:30, so we will, it's almost 6:30, what else can we handle within a minute or two here? Liquor license fees, under whole business?
I move to refund the liquor license fees.
We have a motion by Rinkie, is there a second to refund liquor license fees?
For both years, Sean?
For next year.
So, in 2020, we charged them 25%, we refunded them 75%. Did you also want to refund that?
That was not part of my motion, my motion was just for 2021.
2021?
2021.
I will second.
Now, by refunding, or, we should have a second.
A second.
Oh, you did, okay. We do have a motion by Rinkie and seconded by LeBeau to refund the 2021. 2021 liquor license fees, correct?
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
All right, yes, sir.
Okay, now, what if, uh, bars can reopen, uh, March 1st? And then we come back and charge for three-quarter of a year, or?
I don't think so legally.
I think that part of the purpose of this is to, um, help support those businesses in what they've lost from this year.
Well, supposedly, there's a lot of support coming from state and feds. And until we know what that is, I think we're maybe putting the ball out there ahead of the basket. So, I think for the, the little bit of money that we're taking or we're charging them for the liquor licenses, that I'm 100% on approval, giving them back to 2021, they'll never recoup the money they've lost. So if we can give them a little bit of help.
And at least show our support.
Right.
For these businesses, recognize they've struggled.
My thought on keeping the 2020, without going further back, is that really they were open at full capacity that first quarter. That's what it was there for. We don't know what's going to happen for 2021, even if the door is open. Um, yeah, I don't know that it's going to be back at a full 100% operating capacity. Even if all restrictions are lifted, not everyone is going to be willing to go to the bar. This is going to take a long time to, to recover, so.
Well, some predictions are by May, you're going to be going to Twins game.
I hope so, but.
Yeah, there's a lot of predictions out there.
I don't know. I, I could see 50%, and then look at it again come June, or, I'm willing to.
I'm going to argue in favor of this, because, you know, the wheels of bureaucracy turn slowly enough, and we've been waiting for the state to do a lot of things, and we are here at the local level and can act. And I agree that it's not a whole lot of money. Any other discussion?
Just so everybody knows, they have already paid their 2021, so that has already come out of their pocket.
Yep. And the motion was to refund.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, we can vote on this motion, then I have another one to follow, I guess.
Okay, uh, we'll vote on this, but then we're going to have to break for the truth in taxation hearing. So any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
We have one opposed, the motion carries four to one. All right, then we will recess the council meeting and go into our truth in taxation public hearing, and we'll turn this over to our crack staff to lead us through, although it's not really new to us, since we've been working on this for some time. And let's see, we are on, on the page 100 and, I'm going to start with water and sewer budget tax levy, 35. Where would you like to start?
Well, let's start with the, the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
If we go to the next slide. This one is just stating that the levy is due to the county five working days after December 20th, which I believe they include Christmas Eve as a holiday, so December 29th is the deadline this year. And if you go to the next slide, the 2021 tax levy is 851,000, the LGA is 771,290, other revenues 859,715, giving us a total revenue of two, $2,482.05. The expenditures are $2,545,519. This is bringing us in at a 12.1% increase for 2021 at an unbalanced budget. We are still short $63,514 that would have to come out of reserves. Going to the next page, this is our general fund expenditures, and it's a comparison from 2020 to 2021. I'll just hit on the highlights. If you go down about four lines, the administration is up 18.9%. That is mainly due to salary real and benefit reallocations, doing some, changing to where salaries hit upon and considering the raises also. The next one down that had a pretty big increase was police department. Again, that is due to payroll, that is due to training, policies and procedures set, specific training they wanted the police department to follow, and computer support to the county, I believe, increased quite a bit this next year. Building inspection, 21% increase, that is due to payroll and benefits. Weed inspection went up quite a bit, that is, um, one of the employees that is paid partially out of there, took out a health insurance policy they didn't have before. Animal control went down quite a bit, that was reallocation or reduction of payroll in that department. Streets and alleys went up considerably, that was transferred capital improvement and adding a line item for damage deposit refund. Snow and ice removal is due to blading. Recreational trail went down considerably, that is due to a reduction of the transfer to capital improvement fund. Cable television went down quite a bit, that was reallocation from salaries going more to motor vehicle than cable. Transfer to EDAF, at this point, the council went in at removing that transfer, so that's totally 100% down. And transfer to township, that is repayment due to annexation, and we are done paying that, so it's just a small dollar amount. But overall, 7.8% increase. And if you go to the next graph, that is going to show you the portion of the general fund that goes towards salaries, benefits, and the remaining budget. Forty-three and a half percent go to salaries, 3.9 to benefits, and 52.6% to remaining. The next slide will show you the comparison from salary and benefits and remaining budget comparably from 2020 to 2021, and it stayed fairly even keel. The next one is a graph showing the general fund expenditures and how they're broken up. Public safety, let's see, where's the biggest one? Public safety is the biggest one. That is 30, almost 35% of the budget, and that's police, fire, and EM. The next one would be public works, that is streets and snow, and that's 22%. General government is 18.4%. That includes your, mainly your city departments. That's admin, motor vehicle planning, building, mayor, elections. The debt service is the bond transfer. Building inspector, compo site, that includes weed tree and building inspector. Parks and rec is library, hockey, beaches, parks and trail. Miscellaneous is recreational programs and cable. Then the next slide is revenues. The main changes here are rent was lowered for the park rentals, public safety was increased, that is just tracking the TZD grant a little bit differently than we did before, and you'll see the expenditure in the police department that follows that. Airport rent and fuel are what jumped that up. Building permits were lower, uh, the permit fees were lowered. Motor vehicle, we increased the driver's license filing fees. Miscellaneous, damage deposit right away, again, that follows with the expenditure that line, I'm, item was added, and reimbursement to streets and parks. Cable TV, the franchise fee was based on actuals over the last couple of years, bringing the revenues up 8.6%. And you can see the division of those on the graph, biggest ones being property taxes and state aid, of course. Next page shows the graph of the LGA over the years. It's been steadily increasing. We went down in 2010, but we've increased each year since then. The EDAF fund, not a lot of changes, other than some salary reallocations, reduction of maintenance equipment and contract services, contractual services based on actuals again. That brought up a total increase of 10%. And I will turn it over to Ron for the next slide for the water department.
Okay, thank you. Um, total appropriations in the water fund went from 995, the 722 there, to 1.33, or a 3.8% budget increase. First of all, the source of supply of the wells, we didn't change that at all. The plant, or the VOC plant and the treatment plant, that went up by 2%. The distribution system, which includes all the water mains, hydrants, valves, et cetera, that went up by 2.4. Admin, which is all the insurance bonds and the wages, health insurance, that went up by 7%. And the lion's share, obviously, the non-operating costs, went up by 3.5%. So our proposed rate increase, the flat rate will increase by 50 cents, and the bulk rate will increase by 10%, or 10 cents, I should say, I'm sorry. And again, the, so it went up by 2.3%, 2.2, 3.1. So total is right in that 3% range. On the sewer budget, correction on the water fund where it all is, source of supply is 3.1%. The purification system, which is the treatment plant, is 4.9. The distribution system is 2.9. Salaries and benefits is at 11.1. Admin is at 5.8, and the non-operating expenses is at 72%. So you can see that is quite far and away our largest expense. That includes all of our bonds and our capital improvement and equipment fund, so. On the sewer end of things, our total appropriations went from 1.4 million to 1.6 million, a 12.2% increase. Again, the majority of that came in with our acquisition of the stammer property. And, uh, and going out with the collection systems, we went up 2.4%. The disposal system, which is the ponds, 2%. The admin went up 6%. And again, the non-operating went up 21.5%. The admin, eight. And the aeration pond, um, is 13.5, again, which this year that switched from 80% of AMPIs to 100%. And then we're proposing again a $1 increase to the base rate and 18 cent increase to the bulk sewer rate. And on the next page, the collection system is at 2.7% of the total budget. Uh, the ponds is at 3.5, salaries, or the sewer salaries is at 8%. The admin is at 26.2, non-operating expense there is at 37%. The irrigation salary and benefits is at 3.7, irrigation admin is at 7, and the aeration pond is 11.9%. Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, on the, on the liquor end of it, uh, our biggest expense is purchasing product. Uh, we're budgeting for a 4.1% increase up to 1.2 million next year. Salaries are up 6.2. A lot of that has to do with the appropriation that we did this year with our salaries. Uh, other expenses are going to go up 2.1, and we're going to transfer 4.9% increase from 51,500 to 54,000. Uh, so total appropriations are going to increase by 4.1%, 17,343,44. On our graph, you can see, uh, again, expenses are 69% of our largest purchasing. Salaries and benefits are 13.85. Uh, overheads 2.3, other expenses 11.5, and transfers 2.3%. As we go into the revenue side of it, um, it was kind of hard to budget, but we went very conservative, because we don't know what next year's going to be. We've been blessed with a good year this year. So we went conservative numbers, and we used real numbers from 19 and some from 20 to budget a 3% increase in liquor sales. Beer sales up 3.6, wine up 3%. Other merchandise is up 11.2, tobacco's up 15.8, uh, sales tax 2.4, which follows along with all the sales. Uh, other revenues down 9.3%. So the total revenues would be up 4.2%, or 17,367,690. So our liquor fund revenue graph shows our beer sales at 46%, uh, liquor sales at 25%, wine at 10.5, other merchandise 4.5, tobacco sales 5.5, sales tax is 8.1, and other revenues are 0.4. Any questions on the liquor end?
Is that wine pump?
Is it 0.4?
It is the question.
One month this year.
Yes.
Praying for next year.
Any questions from the council?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, I know Belinda, you were out sick the last couple of weeks, and you put this all together while you were off. So thank you for putting in the extra effort to getting it all done in time. I really appreciate you doing all that.
I think she had to stay busy to stay out of Bill's hair, right?
Or vice versa.
Yeah. Anybody from the audience here to speak to the hearing? Questions, comments? If not, we will close the, just one comment, you know, we, we look at the, you know, what's projected to come out of reserves, but just to mind you that depending upon how the year goes, you know, that it could fully go the other way, you know, if the snow removal holds the way it does and, and, you know, other things. So, not to be an alarmist or whatever, but in order to balance the budget, so to speak, that's the number that's projected to be taken from reserves. So is there anything else? We'll close the hearing and get back into the regular part of the city council meeting, and we are back on item A under whole business. Councilor Hertzberg?
Uh, I guess I'd like to make a motion to refund 2020, uh, three months for the eatery, being they never opened, I think we should refund theirs, to be fair, especially in consideration of what we're doing for '21.
That's a good point. I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie, to refund, um, whatever was collected from the eatery at 112 Washburn, or wherever their name is. Um, I guess that's basically it, to refund the, the fees that were collected from the eatery at 112. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Got carried? All right, thank you. Then back up to item E under new business, the police union, contract language, schedule hours and overtime. Is that something we want to wait on, too, or are we clear on that one?
I think we're clear on that one.
Okay. You know, that, uh, came up that we were doing something in opposition with the, the scheduled hours, is how the overtime was affected. I have some ideas how we got to that point, but, uh, property finance, first, offices and procedures, and the chief had been working on this, so go ahead.
So, policies was going through, the personnel policy, looking at certain things. There was discussion in that policy about overtime pay. Um, right off the top of my hand, I can't remember if we ended up just eliminating the whole section on that or not, but in any event, it came up that police officers per our union agreement are paid overtime and calculated that differently than the rest of the city employees. Um, according to the union contract, officers should be getting overtime after they work 84 hours in a pay period. Uh, the practice has been to base the overtime calculation on the number of hours scheduled. So if an officer is scheduled 80 hours, that officer will get overtime pay starting at anything over 80. But if they're scheduled for 84, then they don't get overtime until they hit 84 hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, policies was of the opinion that we should be following the bargain for language in the union agreement. Uh, so policies voted to make the recommendation. Did we actually take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. We did vote to make the recommendation that we follow what was bargained for. We reached out to the city's labor attorney, who expressed that this is a past practice that's going to be binding until the expiration of the current union agreement, and she advised that we send the union a notice of elimination of past practice, which puts the union on formal notice, that this is something that if they want to continue, needs to be bargained for in the upcoming agreement. Um, and then when I reached out to, um, Mayor Thompson, you expressed that you thought there was probably, or there should have been a memorandum of understanding in place. Uh, so Jennifer had drafted up a proposed memorandum of understanding for us to consider tonight, so that we can send the notice of past practice and the MOU to sort of confirm what we are. and the MOU to sort of confirm what we are doing through the expiration of the contract. And then that will be something to take up in future negotiations.
Nobody's aware that there was a memorandum of understanding that we had, when we had originally changed or that had gotten changed. So that's partly why we're here right now.
It was my understanding when this came up, so I want to say it was 13, 14, that this came up, we changed, we were looking to change our scheduled hours so we could schedule more in one week and less in another. I was informed at that time that it was a gentleman's agreement that was there and we were going to operate in this manner. It just, when we talked about in policies and procedures, it just creates some confusion. So just want to clear things up.
Our understanding is that it adds a significant amount of time to doing payroll each period. So with that, I would move to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding overtime calculation for the Asme Police Officers Bargaining Unit.
Second. Motion by Ranky, seconded by Gilmore, to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding overtime calculation for the Asme Police Officers Bargaining Unit. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried?
I move to approve the elimination of past practice notice to the Asme Police Union regarding overtime calculation effective January 1, 2022.
Second. Motion by Ranky, seconded by Gilmore again to approve the elimination of past practice notice to the Asme Police Union regarding overtime calculation effective January 1st, 2022. Discussion?
I just want to note that really I think the intent of this is that when we renegotiate, we get a standard and we stick to that. Whatever that is, I'm not saying that this is right or wrong. We just need to figure out what we're going to do and put that in the agreement and then follow it.
Just 22 is the start of the next three-year contract or whatever length the contract is, that's part of the negotiating.
The current contract ends at the end of '21.
Correct. Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? All right, then the next item is severance pay and retirement on page 101. Down there. And there we are. And this has been something that's been on the cities, we've been working on for some time is we've kind of gone or done some things individually, but looking to put that into a written agreement now here with the MOU as far as the, between the city and Asme and Police and City Hall General Bargaining Units. And this would be effective with the employment dates on or after August 21st, not eligible for retiring insurance benefit.
It's clarified it affects employees hired on or before.
On or before.
Yep. This again came out of policies and procedures. We recommended that it be adopted. So I'll move to approve the severance pay retirement memorandum of understanding between the city of Painesville and Asme Police and City Hall General Bargaining Units.
Second. Motion by Ranky, seconded by Gilmore, to approve the severance pay retirement memorandum of understanding between the city of Painesville and Asme Police and City Hall General Bargaining Units. Discussion?
So employees hired after August of 2007 do not have this benefit, correct?
That would be correct.
And what about before 2004?
They would get this new agreement.
The same agreement, the 850?
Right, yeah, this does away with that tiered system of 2004, 2007 and.
Okay. And what is the reasoning why after 2007 no benefit?
I don't think it's no benefit, but it's not this benefit. Because I think this was an older policy that some employees were grandfathered into.
How many employees does this apply to?
I think there's like four or five.
Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? And another COVID issue here in regards to the PTO hours. Get an update there from, I know staff's been working on getting us some up-to-date numbers there so we can make a decision on that.
Yep, this was tabled from the last meeting. One of the requests was that we try to come up with a budget implication if this is a payout. There are seven staff members, seven staff members that are over 325 PTO hours. That was always our limit of being able to have for PTO hours based on the past year's issues that we had with COVID, with our city administrator position being open. And then toward the end of the year, we lost our payroll, council payable position at City Hall and police secretary. Police was in training most of the year. There were staff members that were hitting that 325 and there just wasn't an opportunity to use those hours. So the council had increased those hours to 400 until December 31st. So now we're at that timeframe. The way the payroll system works is if we don't do something with those hours on December 31st and we change that back to 325, those hours are going to be gone for the staff members. So I did put together a little spreadsheet that I think Jennifer handed out prior to the meeting that lists the employees and the balance where they were at after 5 payroll yesterday. And the third column lists how many hours over the 325 limit they are at right now at their hourly wage. And I believe it was mentioned at a buyout, if we were to pay out those employees and take them down at the 325, 50% payout, what the total cost would be and 100% payout. With the benefits being calculated, about 5%. That usually is about what the city share is for benefits. Or the other choice was to possibly let the employees extend the timeframe that they can use these hours with the understanding that some of these employees the next couple of months will not be able to use any PTO if they audit season. And maybe if we were to extend it, maybe go to June.
So you don't think if we extended it till March 31st?
It would not presidiate, not with the audit.
So nobody's going to take any time off from now until March 31st?
Very rarely do I take any time off during this timeframe because I'm getting ready for year-end audit. And Jen is right in the audit process.
I would expect too, that not knowing what happens with, you know, other absences and things like that, that, you know, it's going to be anybody's guess as to what happens there. You know, we were short-staffed for some time, the past couple of weeks, so no one else could take any time off.
And still missing that person that does some of the.
I guess myself, I'm not in favor of appeal. Number one, it's not in the budget. I think somehow, some way, and now that we have an administrator, we're going to need his expertise to figure out our personnel and if we need to fill a slot or how we're going to do this. We've got to get back on track. So we, and I'm not pointing fingers because I realize we're short and this is what happens. But we got to eliminate the excuses and get back on track. Do you think if we extended it to June 30th, can most, 75, 90% of the people get back under 325?
I truly believe.
And that would cost no money for the city. All it is is it would knock you down 50%, which is my idea, to cut down the budget for what hours you worked. So I guess I'd do a motion to keep the 400 hours until June 30th of 2021.
I would second that.
I'd be happier at 375. When you look at the chart, you only got one that's 10 hours over that. But that would just keep it normal and just extend it out six months. So it'd be easy for payroll. Anyway, that was my motion.
And we do have a motion to extend the 400 hours out to the maximum to June 30th of 2021. Any other discussion? Sir?
If we extend it out to June 30th, I mean, I understand some employees might be able to use that down to 325, but then we're just going to be at 320, 325 and then hitting that cap again, are we not?
They would have to continue to use each month as they accumulate time. That is correct.
I think the reason why, and I certainly understand the budgetary concerns, but the reason I sort of favor a buyout is because then we're not forcing employees to all take a vacation, not simultaneously obviously, but I feel like we might be setting ourselves up to be short-staffed for a little while.
Well, I think you'd be in the same boat with a buyout. If you were to buy out, you're going to put everybody at 325 potentially on December 31st. And January, they're going to be accumulating and having to take time off in February and March. It's like, I think whether you do it in June or in January, you're going to be in that same scenario.
I think a buyout sets a bad precedent. And then you're going to have people that would rather have a buyout than take time. Thinking if you had, went till June 30th, depending what's going on, the next council could say, we're going to have to do, even sell half your hours in or whatever you have to do. Because we can't, I can't tell you what's going to happen with COVID in March.
Yeah. Was there a consensus from employees as to whether or not they would prefer a buyout?
Jen, you talked more than me because I was calling. I don't think a buyout is the answer either. I think the employees would prefer an extension. I really do think that's what they would prefer.
You think June is workable?
Yeah, I do. Ron, what do you think, or Bill, your call?
June's great for me.
Yeah, I think that would work good. I think most of my crew is going to be down by the end of this year. So it's not going to be an issue on our end.
And like I said earlier, by June, hopefully we know what our personnel situation and try to get that resolved and up to speed also.
Okay, any other discussion? The motion then is to extend the 400 hours max to June 30th, 2021. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? Tom here. Aye.
Aye.
Welcome. We've had some discussions about, you know, what things have happened here with, you know, exposures and tests and all that as to coming up with something on as far as some type of, you know, policies or whatever on working from home and how we're doing limiting exposure and things. Tom, you got some ideas?
I guess me and Belinda talked and Jen talked last Wednesday for a little bit on the phone. Kind of came up with some ideas for the front city hall staff. To my understanding, most of the ladies that work up there really don't want to completely shut down City Hall like a lot of our neighboring communities are. So we kind of brainstormed some ideas. One of the comments that was made was, you know, one department is doing this within the city. It should go across all the departments so it's all equal, which I know might cause some issues with the police, liquor store, public works. So I think it's tough to make a work-from-home policy or a limit exposure policy for all departments across the board when they're all different and unique in their own certain way. I think what we need to do is sit down with the department heads and try to figure out what each department can do to limit their staff exposure. Is there potential for people to work from home? You know, you have, you know, me and Belinda, I think that was on the phone when we talked because you were still at home.
I was still at home.
But, you know, we talked about maybe moving their schedule a little bit where they work in City Hall for three days and two days they work from home to limit some of the exposure with the people coming in to renew their driver's license or taps. You know, one of the ideas that we threw out there was we take the, one of the old phone numbers that we had here and do call forwarding so one of the people working from home can make appointments. And then we operate as an appointment base for the DMV and stuff like that so we can kind of get that separation in there. I don't know how that, you know, what would work for public works. I don't know what would work for the PD. Liquor stores, tough to sell bottles of wine and beer from home, so.
And motor vehicle, it's very tough.
And motor vehicle, they have to be logged into the system here the way I understand it, so we can't do that at home. There was talks of, you know, pushing some people back to work on Saturdays. There are people that already come in and work on Saturdays and, you know, this would give them an opportunity to maybe potentially save some of that overtime cost. Schedule them on a Saturday where they can do dealer renewals and stuff like that where they don't necessarily need to be face to face with them. And they're not getting interrupted either when there's, you know, potential of having the short staff in the city hall. So I don't know, you know, where we go from here and what kind of plan would work because it's going to be different for each department.
Yeah, and our local emergency is still in effect, correct? Which if I recall right, we did give leeway to, at that time was the co-administrators and department heads to adjust schedules and things like that. And my understanding is that even on December 31st, that still continues. It's as long as the state or the governor has his emergency powers or that is in effect. So to that extent, we do have flexibility there within. And I guess it's a matter of the council, you know, continuing to, you know, to understand or if they have some other ideas as to, as to what to do. You know, I'm not sure if, you know, working three days in here and two days out reduces the exposure or not.
The way we kind of talked about it is basically you'd be set up on a team. So you work with that team. So you're not cross-contaminating. It's not like, you know, I think one of the examples we talked about, like Belinda would be in the office on these certain days and then Jen would be in the office on these certain days. You're assigned to the team. So if one person gets that exposure, you're only taking out two to three people instead of six.
I know there has been some cross-training. I know, has there been enough to be able to function that way?
Well, motor vehicle, you know, the three girls can all do motor vehicle. I don't believe Kristen does a lot of dealer work. It's mainly Melinda and Jody that do the dealer work. Jen and I are not excessively into the programs any longer. We can basically, when the lines are long, we try to go through the lines and direct people to what forms they need to fill out and such, but we can't get on their site. So we can't help them process any motor vehicle transactions. The three girls in their position, there's, they are not really cross-trained in anything Jen or I do. Probably Jen and Jody, or Melinda and Jody can work off each other. Jen and I can somewhat.
So basically nobody is really cross-trained. You got the three ladies in the front, there's only ones who can do their job. And you and Jen can only do your job and you can't do anything on the front.
Correct. You know, they just went through the training on the new program and because of the administrator position trying to be filled by Jen and I somewhat and Stephanie's position, we talked to you guys about the training if you want us to try to do it because it was 70-plus hours of training minimum.
Basically, you can't really limit the staff or the, all you can do is limit the exposure of the staff in the back. Whereas the staff has to stay away from each other in the back, in the break room, chat and so forth.
And we don't do that now.
Right, but I mean, looking at this, like in my office, what we did, we did two and. Right, but I mean, looking at this, like, in my office, we did, we did two-and-a-half day splits. So we had two teams, one went two-and-a-half days, the other team came back two-and-a-half days. The credit union did seven-day splits. Some work at home, and the other ones were back and back and forth, so they can split it out. But if you can't cross-train or everybody's not cross-trained, that would be.
And I know that's the reason why we talked about, you know, doing the appointments, so we're not having, you know, some days you have a line at the door with DMV stuff, motor vehicle stuff, and some days it's a little bit slower where if you have appointments scheduled for the DMV, then we know how many people are coming that day. And a day if we only have two people working DMV, we can do so many appointments. If we only have one, it's going to be less appointments.
I do know that you feel DMV is fully open. As far as I know, they're still fully open. Motive Video is fully open. Wake, Saint Cloud, Ed Limer, I do not know because they don't actually hold right now. So I'm not sure if they're available to point on what their position is now.
So if we did appointments in the appointment only?
Well, I think we're really cutting back on customer service. We go that route. I mean, we've bought this for three-quarters of a year. I'm seeing light at the end of the tunnel. And I mean, another three, four months, you might see some sunlight.
You know, I talked to Alice, who used to work here. She works, she's a deputy resident of Motive Video. I talked to her a few weeks ago. Well, it's been longer than that ago now. But they were taking appointments and they were doing thirteen customers. Each staff member was doing thirteen appointments a day. So, yeah, cutting, it would cut our.
I mean, we built our reputation that we got our budget projected on motor vehicle growing. Now is not the time to.
But in the last two weeks, we had five employees out with COVID. Five.
Wow.
And if the rest of the city hall staff were to go out, then we can't serve any customers. I mean, I had a fairly mild case of COVID. I had a fever for thirty-six hours, and I'm still feeling residual symptoms from it three weeks later. There are still nights where I just can't function at the end of the day because my brain shuts down. I mean, I, we have a lot of people who walk through these doors every day. Bill has a lot of people at the liquor store, many of whom aren't wearing masks. And I think that that's a conversation that needs to be rehashed. I'm not saying this to be alarmist. I'm not saying this because we're scared or we want the government to control us. But at some point, we need to start thinking about the health and safety of our employees and the public before the dollars that come in the door.
So what's your most time-consuming? Is it doing the new licenses?
The driver's license probably take the longest to help a customer. With the real ID and the enhance, I believe, take between fifteen and twenty minutes per person.
So I'm going to shoot off the hip here. They can do everything almost anywhere except your pictures taken for the real ID and so forth.
The customers can?
Yeah.
Yes, that is true.
And so if they're taking so much time and slowing down the lines and so forth, can we make a queue here just for that?
That would process the driver's license?
Yeah. So everything was processed?
I don't think one staff member could do that. Because I think probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the people that come in are getting driver's licenses.
You'd be better off putting a station here just for renewals.
For tabs and transfers.
Just giving them in and out as quick as possible.
We'll take out, well, skip what I said and go a little bit farther. Whatever is the fastest or the slowest, make a certain station for them. So you can cut down the lines going this way where everybody's waiting in line and waiting in there talking to you there. If tabs is the fastest thing, you can click them out. Can you put one here? If that's not the right answer, the slowest thing put right there, because you have more room here than you do laying down the line here. I'm just saying, think out of the box and see which one works the fastest, easiest, best. And see if something like that, just brainstorm it out.
That would be a really good idea.
That's a great idea.
DNR would be another one. DNR coming out of your renewal, especially if we get snow. The people with sleds are going to be out the door down at the DMV.
But the only thing I could see being maybe a little bit of an issue trying to get set up would be the printer that they all share up there. And the DNR little printer is eyes.
It would be easier than a camera.
Oh, much easier than a camera. But, yeah, maybe we could work out.
Just brainstorm it.
This would be an easy start for just simple tab renewals and simple DNR. Absolutely. If you have all three, you know, tab, you know, DNR and driver's license, you still have to go through the main line. But potentially, yes. We are seeing an increase in drop-off box stuff, and we are seeing an increase in mail-in since, you know, the last hit we did on Facebook and website.
Like I said, you can cut down the line, you're going to cut down the exposure, you're going to be, move people quicker through. Whatever works best, just kind of throw it out there.
And I did ask Jody the other day, I said, you know, give me your ten-second synopsis on how things are going with the new program. And she said with the new motor vehicle program, which is your tab renewal, your title transfers, she believes, you know, A, it's new, so it takes a little longer trying to figure out all the bells and whistles on it. But she said, in the long run, when they're very proficient at it, she does believe it'll still be a little bit more timely than the previous system because it asks more questions, even for a simple tab renewal. So there's just more answers you have to answer, which, of course, everybody, click, takes a second or two longer.
And if you can do something like that, let's jump over to, like I say, Saturdays. And can we say, or can you find somebody who would not work Monday, they're going to work Saturday morning from eight to noon? All they're going to do is all the dealerships. Would that help or hurt, or would not matter?
Well, if we were close to the public and they came in to do the driver's, just dealer work, that would probably be very helpful, but it's not enough time. They do, oh, I did an, I did an average count a while back for you guys. I want to say it averaged maybe a hundred and twenty dealer documents, transactions a week. And if you figure each one takes even fifteen minutes, you know, it's a couple days' worth of work.
And you have trained some of the dealers to drop off their stuff?
They all are pretty much.
Okay.
You know, we're trying to almost require it because it's less exposure for everyone than standing here for forty minutes.
Yeah, so let's figure it out, then.
But then you also said that drop-offs and mail-ins are also going to increase. Can those be processed on Saturday?
Well, we can't, no, I should respond to that one. The drop-offs and dealer work, we can't hold for more than twenty-four hours. So if they drop off on Monday, we can't wait till Saturday to do them. They have to be done within a certain turnaround.
So you think most of the dealers would like Saturday service or not? I know some, their title people don't work Saturdays.
They usually, most dealers drop off two to three times a week. They're not going to want to drop off once a week or two.
And is that, that's not probably the kind of thing that somebody could do from home?
Because you have.
They are not allowed to do any motor vehicle work from home. I do not believe that is changed. I know when everybody was shutting down in April, that was very strongly told to everybody that you cannot do motor vehicle work and pay inventory home.
Nor can you access their programs from home.
I don't think we could come back with, but I'd say think out of the box and like, he said, you have to get people so you don't lose your whole office. My office is okay because fifty percent of us had it already. So we just got the other fifty percent, and we can handle it, so.
We're about at that point now, too. Two out of five have been possible.
And so it's sweeping through, but it is going down.
Yeah.
But I would say, anyway, you can limit the time you're talking to people or the people in the line or the amount of people and as fast as you can get them through, because what is it, fifteen minutes?
That's a great idea.
That's a really good idea. Just put a DNR to itself.
Well, I think we've got staff in place that's smart enough to figure that out, and we have already given them the, the, do what's needed to be done, the leeway to react accordingly.
I've cut down on, you know, I have ten, fifteen vendors a day, and I said, I don't need to see you every day. So.
You've cut back your hours and?
Cut back on the hours. Like, I'm having the vendors email me stuff, you know, and they're in how many stores a day? Plus, they're not bars right now, so they got nothing to do but bug you. So I'm limiting how much time they get to spend in my store.
On mask wears from the customers, have you seen an increase in that?
Last week was great, because I didn't see any.
Pardon?
Last week was great, because I didn't see anything.
You know, I think it's about the same, Megan, maybe an uptick a little. Mask wears, yeah. It's the same people that come in, same customers every week, every day. Not to put you on the spot, but I wasn't there.
Well, I guess I wouldn't say so. There are people who have not worn them previously, who are, yes. But there are also quite a few who have worn them and aren't.
They're just not.
Yeah.
But they're in and out with them. Very short time. They're not your shoppers.
But are they the customers who would typically pay with cash instead of some other form of, like, a credit card where you're not handling it?
Well, the credit card, everything's handled on the other side of the counter, so we're not touching anything there.
But if the maskless customer is wearing, I mean, knowing those who I know who don't wear masks, they deal with everything in cash.
Some, some of them are probably right. There's probably more cash, some of those folks, yeah. You know, a lot of them use a debit card, you know, a lot of them use debit cards. But we handle a lot of cash, a lot of cash, so.
And you still have gloves for your employees that want to wear gloves?
Yes, yes. You know, and we're fifty percent of our staff as well.
And, you know, the one thing the city hall has going that we don't so much as we have, the girls behind the plexiglass, very rarely do they come out around that plexiglass. Jen and I will more just try to get through that line to help people. But we don't, we're usually always behind the plexiglass.
But like today, we senior day, we carried out a ton of proposals, you know, a ton.
Are your employees pretty good about wearing masks?
Very good.
Everyone's wearing it properly and?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I mean, if you're setting the example, it helps the customers when they walk in and they see that everyone's doing it, that's all.
Oh, yeah, no, no, our staff does, I think, they're fantastic with that, so.
I still think that, I mean, Menards has been mandating masks since March, well before any mandates were in place. So certainly, they have not seen a drop in customers who are buying home improvement goods.
You need to do eleven percent off.
Get them eleven percent rebate on their records.
They also have order online stuff, too, which I don't think we're doing that yet, Arvin.
No, no, no. But we do have curbside, which does happen. Yeah. In fact, I just advertise that for our wine cellar, so. It's a tough call. I know stores that are mandating it and are losing business, but at what cost, you know, that's.
I mean, how many cases of beer do we have to sell to replace an employee? And if we start doing that comparison, we're doing the wrong comparison.
Right, right.
All right, well, staff has continuing directive then. We will move on to, thank you, Tom.
Nice to see you again.
Yeah. Been a while.
Go back to hanging in your cave there upside down here, Mr. Bad.
I'm going to try to.
All right, IVB rental ordinance. Okay. And Brad has been sitting here patiently, and has found that Stearns County has an ordinance that we can possibly apply.
It does apply, actually. We are under the umbrella as long as we don't have our own. And it is, it covers everything, but very vaguely. The only thing it doesn't cover would be that density provision that we had in our system.
Do they do inspections if there's a complaint or?
Complaint only.
Right, okay. But after complaint, they follow up?
Right.
And there's no licensure with this, right?
Correct.
No. And I did ask, but I'll ask again for the record here, is that, you know, if they, if they do get a complaint, do they contact the nearest law enforcement officer, or do they send somebody?
Well, I don't know, when I talked to her, she said that they have contacted law enforcement in town. I've asked her to reach out to me also if she gets a complaint. Now that I know this is, exists.
Yeah. I know one thing that come up is, you know, it's something more for us to enforce, but we potentially will be involved anyway. And the density issue can be dealt with through zoning?
Could be.
Yep. And this has come back to us because of the, we were going to send it to the planning.
Right, I just thought we maybe should be, have more information, this information before, you know, if you want to make a decision. It's time to be, give you the information so that you're informed before we tax planning board with something that you don't want.
I think planning should just be made aware of this and discuss it at the public hearing and then decide if they want to recommend the new ordinance or rely on what we have.
I think for sure it has to be posted that anybody who rents anywhere can contact, Stearns County has it right now. Because they probably don't know who to contact.
Right.
So it has to be publicized somewhere for anybody who's renting if you have an issue call. This is the right way to do it?
Forty schools, we should publish that.
Well, website for sure, but I mean, it has to be newsletter, we've got.
Well, we can post it on our major bulletin board, that we post all our notices on, we can post it on the public bulletin board. We can post it on Facebook, or we can post it on Channel Eight.
You can find newsletters, we do that again. But anyway, just to get, try to get the information out there would be good. Because I'm sure there's renters that don't know where to go with, with a complaint. Although this would be a good place to start, and this, we can refer them to this. I guess I wasn't aware that the county had a procedure. Maybe this is all we need. It puts, if you're the renter and the railing's broke and the landlord ain't fixing it, this is probably going to get it fixed.
That's kind of my opinion, too. I feel like it would be redundant for us to implement one on a city level when this is already being covered at the county level.
And we don't have to adopt this on a city level, it's already.
It's already there.
Part of the program. We just need to educate our renters.
Correct.
I'd love to see every renter get a copy of this when they sign their rental agreement.
Hang on. Can I just, a comment? If it were me, as a landlord like I am, I would post a sign in my building someplace, just with the information that you have a problem and your landlord's not taking care of the context of the company.
I mean, ninety percent of the landlord tenant problems can probably be resolved between the two parts.
Right.
But this is for the ten percent where I'm not going to fix that and blah, blah, blah. Pretty soon, you got a dispute.
Okay, well, it's going to the planning, and they can discuss it, and if they have any other ideas, they can, certainly let the council know.
So are you thinking that we should still hold the public hearing on the other ordinance?
I think so. I think we can determine after that hearing if this is necessary. If it's not, maybe what other ordinances should we consider, such as the requirement that it be posted in a building or some other thing like that? Or maybe we want to do a hybrid, I don't know. I think planning should hear both of them and make a recommendation, if that's what they want.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, just reading through this just briefly, it looks like, you know, if we just go with this ordinance, it would actually take a good chunk of the city out of it, even on the enforcement. It appears it's going to probably be on environmental services to address it. And then if they want to take any civil action, it'll be on the county attorney's office to address it at that point, so. I would say that if we follow this one, largely, it's going to be the county that's going to have to address any issues and complaints that they would have, so. We kind of take the city out of that equation.
All right, thank you. Okay, then on to IVB, hiring a liquor store clerk and extending the hours of the council. Let's just bill your first year, we're looking to hire. Let's just bill your first year, we're looking to hire Stephanie as a part-time liquor store clerk. She's already started.
Yes, yeah, Tark and I met with Stephanie a week ago. He temporarily appointed her, she's showing interest in working in stores, she's already doing a fantastic job, the fit is great. Would love to keep her. And I believe Lynn would like to keep her as well, so. And she's showing interest and it's working, we're working around her schedule, guaranteed one night a week and then every other weekend. It's working really well. It's cool.
And then to keep her on for her expertise for a little while longer, but.
Yeah, the thought process was maybe to at least appoint her through the end of February, which would get us through the season. And, you know, W two is in year end, quarter end, I haven't done a quarter end yet. And then potentially giving us a little more time to possibly look at what we're gonna do with that job, whether we hire, outsource, whatever.
Isn't this the lady that went and got a different job?
Yeah, she has, she's working full-time, her and I have been doing payroll on Sundays. She's been helping with payroll on Sundays.
Also, she's working full-time plus thirty-two hours a week on Sundays?
She's working full-time for her other job, she helps me with payroll. Normally, it takes four to five hours to do payroll, yesterday was a little pickup. And I don't think she's working thirty-two hours for you, but her position is up to thirty-two.
Yeah, every other weekend, she's working two to three days, she could work.
So, Bill, does this meet your requirements, or are you still looking for?
You know, we are still taking applications to see, to build an eligibility list, but for now, this is working great, yes.
Okay.
And is she willing to continue working with you on Sundays?
She is.
Okay.
Well, with that, I'll make the motion to approve hiring Stephanie Soraki as a part-time liquor store clerk at grade one, step one, thirteen eighty-seven per hour for the 2020 union wage scale.
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to hire, approve hiring Stephanie Soraki as a part-time liquor store clerk at grade one, step one, thirteen eighty-seven per hour for the 2020 wage scale, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried.
I'll make the motion to approve extending the hours for Stephanie Soraki, accounting specialist, February twenty-eighth, 2021.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve extending the hours for the same Stephanie, accounting specialist, February twenty-eighth, 2021, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. All right, airport key hangar final payment due to Bosch there.
Got it.
Yeah, just a quick update, as mentioned, the airport hangar project is complete and the contractor has addressed all the items, so now we're to the point to file the contract. As the council may recall, this project is being funded through federal and state grants. The federal is ninety percent through entitlement funds and the state kicks in five percent, so there's a five percent local match. And your package is a copy of the final pay request. This is basically just releasing the retainers we've held till they're complete. And it amounts to fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number seven, the final payable to Bosch Plumbing and Heating of Paynesville, amount of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, seventy cents.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve payment estimate number seven, as on the action sheet page one twenty-five, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. Anything else out there at the airport? Came all this way just for that, Chuck, huh? We thank you for that. All right, then we have possibly some good news on the property of five oh nine Minne Street, Bill, owner?
Yes, I, as you recall, we, we started a process to have the council pass a resolution declaring this to be a hazardous property. And I filed a paperwork in district court to proceed with that. And then, in some discussion with the property owner, she expressed an interest in just conveying it to the city. She didn't want to argue about it, didn't have the funds to take care of the demolition and just wanted it taken care of. There's been some, some issues with health that have prevented us from getting together. I had an appointment to get something signed today and I got a call that there were some ongoing issues, not able to meet. But, I have prepared through consideration a resolution to accept the donation of that property if we can get to that point. In connection with that, then, there's been another gentleman, Peter Larson, who I believe owns a neighboring property. And I've had some discussions with Ron and Brad, both feel like this would work. He's in, apparently, they've talked directly with him and he has a real interest in doing this. And I think staff believes that the hassle of the city getting involved in doing the demolition, this just pays off. We would just then be out of it. And he's interested in doing something with the property. I think Brad believes he's gonna build another residence and sell it on the property. And so we'd have another lot that would be, have a nicer structure on it and be back on the tax bill. So that'll all be good. And so those are the two agreements that you have before you. The first is an agreement to accept the donation. And the second is an agreement to work with Mr. Larson. He has some, some outs in this agreement if he determines that the, the cost of doing this is more, is substantially more than he thinks a lot's worth, he's trying to protect himself a little bit. So it's possible that come March, he'll say, ah, I found out that it cost way more and I think I'm gonna let the city deal with it. And, but if it does, at least we've saved running through the court process and we have title to the property at that point. Assuming the property owner falls through, as I believe she intends to, but I keep running into roadblocks in terms of getting things signed. But I think we're still on track to get that done.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-four, accepting the donation and the agreement regarding five oh nine Minnesota Street, Paynesville.
Can I ask a question first?
I'll, I'll second.
Yeah, now you can.
Okay. By the city taking ownership or title of this property, does it expose it to any liability? You sell it and the seller, they come back and say, well, I didn't know about this on the property, or some kind of hazard?
Generally, I, I suppose theoretically, yes. I'd be more concerned, obviously, if it was a gas station. You know, with a residential property, I, I talked a little bit with Brad around about that. My, to the best of my knowledge, the history of this property, it's always been a residential property, it's an old home. I don't think there's been, you know, any commercial use that would make me think. But, but he is the gentleman who's, who's interested in turning it down. That's one of his concerns, is that there's maybe hazardous building materials and he's concerned about the cost of that. And that's one of the things he wants to look into. The city's had some experience in demolition of older homes where we've run into that problem. We know that there's some extra cost to doing that. So we'll see what he finds out. I, I don't, we didn't have anybody go through to determine, typically, it's asbestos. And we didn't have everybody go through to determine, but, you know, a lot of often things in the flooring in these older homes and even in the walls, sometimes you do have issues with that. So whoever would be looking at doing the demolition would have knowledge of that and would, you know, be, be building that at a price if that needs to be done.
What, what about assessments, back taxes?
There, there's some taxes. The, the entity who's taking this over is agreed to be responsible for, for back taxes. That's part of, part of his agreement.
Okay.
And he also, in, in, in terms of clerk title, he's, the agreement also provides that he's going to, he was gonna have his attorney check the title. He's already done that and doesn't find any problems with title.
So if he does opt out of that agreement and the city is then responsible for the demolition, does that cost get assessed onto the property? Is that typically how that works?
Yes, we, you know, and I, you never know if, if the property will sell for a price that will recover that assessment for you. But, but yes, I mean, you, you can assess those costs, but you're gonna end up, you know, I, I think, we think that a lot, that a lot in that neighborhood is maybe worth ten or twelve thousand. It's not, you know, I, I don't know what it would sell for until I find a buyer, but it's not, you know, it's not a lot. It's gonna go for a super high price. But, we think that's generally in the ballpark of demolition cost, but don't have a kid, so we don't know for sure.
Well, over there, the empty lot with grass would be better than what you have right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, there are some risks involved, but then you look at the benefit of having that, that-
Yeah, it's gotta come down.
And a, you know, a marketable, usable lot.
And I mean, the real advantage here is we save going through a court process. And that's, you know, and we, we don't end up in any worse position than we would've been in if we did.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, accepting donation and the agreement regarding five oh nine Minnesota Street, Paynesville, any other discussion? All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. Thank you for speeding us up by combining those two. All right, then, the next one shouldn't take that long, because we've been through all of that already. And the first one then is the resolution twenty twenty-five regarding chapter thirty, uh, chapter thirty-four of the city code of the city of Paynesville in regards to the twenty twenty water and sewer rates.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-five regarding chapter thirty-four of the city code of the city of Paynesville.
Aye.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore to approve resolution twenty twenty-five regarding chapter thirty-four of the city code of the city of Paynesville, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. Next one is the twenty twenty-one budget on page one hundred and forty, that's resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, interestingly enough.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, adopting the twenty twenty-one city budget. Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-six, adopting the twenty twenty-one city budget, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. And the last one is the tax levy weighed out on two twenty-five, which is resolution, I don't know, it's not, where am I at here? New system, or I can't page down like I used to. There it is, twenty twenty dash twenty-seven is the resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-one tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, adopting the final twenty twenty-one tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, adopting final twenty twenty-one tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-one, discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. And the only other thing left is informational, that's the notice there of the changes in the lottery schedule on page two hundred and twenty-seven, and then the police report on page two hundred and twenty-eight. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.